All right, county commissioners are now in session. First item we have is invoices, commissioners' reports, and credit applications. So this one is all the jury fees. And then on this other one, there are just a couple of comments that I wanted to make. One is, there is the monies that we're sending back to ISU. I'll just off for the record, it is being sent to ISU. We have the check, it's gone. And then the other one, there was monies being sent back to the state. And these are the funds for Idaho State Treasurer.
Oh, those are tax-did properties, those are the overages, excess proceeds.
Just for the record, that's what I wanted to mention, is that we sell properties because nobody's paid their taxes on them. We do not gain as a county from those funds. The extra funds that are used there end up going to the state.
And so they're going to go save unclaimed property until the prior land, or property owners go in and claim it?
So, just to say, we don't make a profit off of that. This one is for rental of a lift up at the event center that I told them to go ahead and rent it while the weather was still good. They had a rip in the covered shelter and they went and repaired it. So this is after the fact. They were getting neighbors calling in complaining about the noise from the tear and the wind.
And over the next couple of weeks, the commission's going to be meeting the 23rd, which we're going to have all of these ARPA invoices paid then. But because we're not going to have a meeting next Thursday, I'm going to potentially bring up invoices for ARPA that will be paid on the 30th. But if it's okay with the board, I want to include those on the 30th's commissioner report. And then if you have any problems with those invoices, we will not release the payment. But in order to expedite some of those checks to meet ARPA deadlines, we'll process them without signatures, but not release checks until we have the appropriate signatures.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the commissioners' invoices, reports, and credit applications as presented.
Do we have a motion, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Next on the agenda is a salary rate approval form. The people I want to harass are not here, so I'll just be quiet. Nobody believed that could happen.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the salary rate approval form as presented and without any harassment.
Do we have a motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right. Looks like Daniel, you're up first.
Good morning. Dan Kendall, Facilities Director. Just a monthly update. I'll start with maintenance items. We have a few sewer lines that are giving us issues that we're going to try to figure out a solution. But the annex and the ag extension are, seems like every three months we're having issues. So trying to figure out a permanent solution on those two. Another concerning one is we sprung a leak in a steam line in the tunnel. It's not far off from the last one that we had. I'm not sure why, but we'll get that fixed and see. Hopefully it doesn't continue on, but I imagine it probably will. We'll tackle them as they come up.
So as we replace the boiler, is there any plans in replacing them lines?
So with the boiler, we get all new valves. Basically what they're doing is just in the boiler room, but nothing outside of it. But we will, for whatever reason, the newer pipes that come over here to the addition of the courthouse, that's where we're having the problems. I'm not sure if it's a newer pipe that's not as good quality or thick as wall on that pipe, but it really shows itself quick. I mean, that steam will blow that insulation right off and you'll get a puddle on the floor. And I mean, when they pop up, you know immediately there's a problem, so.
So there's no safety concerns with them?
Not, not so far. I mean, it's all been underground, so.
Okay.
Previously, we've had that line replaced under the parking lot, and then we had another little spot under the parking lot a year ago. And now we're in the tunnel, so we'll see.
Can they sleeve those lines? Those, I remember we talked about that before.
The sewer, yeah, but not the steam line.
But you can't.
Yeah.
The pressure there.
Yeah. And it's just like little pinholes, but I'm afraid. We'll look inside the pipe as they take those sections down and kind of see what's going on. We put that treatment in the water to prevent that kind of thing from happening. But yeah, I thought it was interesting, the pipes that are 70 years old are not having an issue, but the pipes that are 50 years old are. But hopefully we're going to figure it out. We did go out to the jail and paint that parking lot. We bought a weed burner and got it to dry. So that was my concern, was how we're going to get the paint to dry, but we figured it out. Turned out nice.
Good. I like this out here where you've changed the parking spaces. Give us a little room out there.
Yeah, a little safer there for everybody, I think. Yeah.
I don't know why that county car's parked there every day, though.
What's that?
I don't know why that county car's parked there every day.
We need to figure out a parking plan.
It's supposed to be over there across the way.
Yeah, I wanted it over there, there you, well, that's your car. I didn't want it in the big parking lot because when we plow it, we have enough obstacles out there with the security cars and whatever, so I had to move it over there, but we need to move it again. That one's probably used more than any of the other ones.
It gets used every single day.
Yeah.
Back and forth to the jail a couple of times.
Yeah.
That's why we have that step challenge.
To be a good example, I'm parking in the farthest away spot there is at the village.
I noticed that. I noticed that.
As far as projects, I think we have all good news. The annex, the HVAC work scheduled to be done the end of February. Restroom stalls were installed in the back of the annex, so that was good to get that done. And fire sprinklers will start right away. The exhibit building, they're pouring the foundation tomorrow, and the building's showing up Monday, the 6th. So that thing's just moving right along.
Shouldn't be me talking about this stuff.
I, it's just been going smooth. I just can't complain about anything, you know, the whole path. But starting with Shanda has been really smooth, and Christie's been very helpful. Planning zoning's been great, so it's just been going really smooth. Road and Bridge, man.
Well, if you follow the process, it usually works.
Yeah, yeah. I think we've got it down. So, yeah, their original schedule said, you know, in March, we should be doing the underground work inside of the building so they can get that slab poured. So everything's right on schedule, going well on that one.
Good.
YDC, they are working on a little bit of a civil drawing, but they are expected to start in January, start breaking ground. I'm going to have the remediation work ready, testing for, you know, whatever might be in the house, so that we can get it out of there if we need to before we do the demo work. So it's just part of the demolition permit. You just need to show that you removed anything in there that could be hazardous, so.
So all our permitting is good?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, we took care of it, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yep, we just, we got that done for them. Sixth Street, today's our last day for Paul. So we're going to get a new superintendent, and it sounds like they're going to send two. It's gotten to the point where we're kind of just waiting for some materials to show up, so he doesn't have a lot to work on. So they're going to send him to a new project in Twin Falls and where he can be a little busier. Here, he has to stay in a hotel and that kind of thing, so. But it's going very well. The interior part's moving right along. We're just kind of waiting for that metal, for the fascia and the sofa, and then a little glass and a couple of doors, but it's moving along good. I've been super excited watching the little bit of snow that we've gotten, watching how that's draining, and it's amazing. Like, I can't even believe, it almost looks like water's going uphill. Like, it's pretty cool. It'll churn up Clark Street and actually go up the road.
Oh, really?
By replacing that last section of sidewalk that you approved, that took care of that. So we're not getting that big puddle.
Not having any islands in the middle and.
Yeah, it's just been great. I've been super curious how that was going to work, and it is working. So that'll be wonderful.
That's good to hear.
Yeah. But like I say, they're just waiting for some backorder items and, yeah, they're not far off from being.
So is everything right here outside my door? Is that where we're at now? All the rest of it's all taken care of?
Yeah. Yep. Yep. And I think that's all I have for you. If you guys have any questions.
No, it looks good.
All right, thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you guys.
Thank you very much for all you do.
You too. Thank you.
All right. Let's go ahead and move down a little bit here. Elise, excuse me. Come on up here.
Elise Foster, subdivision plan. We have a subdivision that is at the final stages. They are requesting a bond for the seeding. They would prefer to wait to seed until the spring, what it would actually take, since we don't have a whole lot of snow to hold it in place. As far as erosion goes, they've watered the piles and got them crested over so we won't have blowing dust. Everything else has been completed as far as construction goes. He has provided the funds. This is Coyote Hollow Phase Four, which is right outside of Incom off of Pittcock.
Okay.
Do you have any questions on the bond part?
Everything made your approval?
That is correct, and Roden Bridge has done an inspection as well.
Good?
Yeah.
No, I read through this last night. I wondered about that, but then I thought, oh, yeah, the seeding makes sense, so that's an easy one, so, okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the final plat for the Coyote Hollow subdivision and the holdback for the seeding in the spring.
Okay. This is the seeding.
That's the plat.
We do have the plat to sign as well, that is correct.
Okay, you want to elaborate on that before we make a motion on it?
Sorry, I was all excited.
That's why I just done it. We'll put them together.
That's fine.
The plat is an 18-lot residential subdivision with three access lots that were created. This is Phase Four of Coyote Hollow. It should be the last phase. That's the plans as of right now. And this is just about a mile and a half outside of Incom.
No concerns?
There were no concerns. They did request an extension, but it really wasn't needed. We're within the timeframe of the ordinance, even without the extension, to get everything completed.
Okay. Now, any questions?
No, I was, like I said, I read through it last night.
Now, we have a motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. John, did you have any comments you want to make?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Chris, do you have one?
Oh.
They have.
It's not quite chock-a-blocked.
Sorry, it's over.
Yeah. Wasn't quite surgery.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got your bell on everything.
Hey, keeping track of me.
Thank you. Have a Merry Christmas. All right, Shanda.
Chief Procurement Officer at NIDHUB with me.
Buddy, you're Public Works Assistant Director.
And I just have a procurement update for the board today to ask Buddy to join in. So we'll jump, if we can jump to the Public Works Bulk County Fuel Project. I have received comment back from Roden Bridge already on that, so we're excited that that one's a little ahead of schedule. So as I go and make those changes, there is one that I wanted to just touch base with the board on, is that would adjust potentially the bids as they come back in. And that is, we had mentioned once, changing to octane. Last year, we went out for 85, and this year, we're going, or we would like to go for 87.
And the reason behind that would be just a lot of the newer vehicles are requiring 87 octane or higher. And our new shop supervisor feels that that could be possibly where we've had a lot of issues with the Durango's, with the lifters and stuff. And so we feel like it'd be a good move to maybe help with that. And then as far as cost-wise, on average, talking with Conrad, that's who we currently have a bid with, it's about 10 cents difference per gallon. And so I did a rough estimate, and using 12 of the departments, it'd be about $6,900 difference added to the budget. And this, again, this is between departments. The one that's going to take the biggest hit would be obviously the sheriff's office. They used 58,000 gallons of unleaded last year, so it'd be about a $5,800 hit from them on average, so.
But potentially, we'll make that back in repair bills.
Yeah, hopefully. Yeah, that'd be great, but.
When it comes to the repairs of the Tahoe's, it had a better repair rate than the Durango's?
Yes, significantly. We've had a few problem Tahoe's, but for the most part, as a fleet as a whole, it's been a great change.
And this contract does saddle fiscal years. It'll start in April. So if we move forward with this change, right, the rate increase, potential increase for departments, we won't know until it's come back in. But right, it won't begin until April, and it'll be like half that year to find a way to make it work, if approved.
For your small departments like weed, for instance, we're talking like $32 a year. I mean, they're pretty small changes for those smaller departments, so.
Well, I think it's a good move. I mean, anytime that we can keep our vehicle running instead of having it in the shop, we're better off. There's no doubt about it. Any concerns?
No, even with the sheriff's office, they're not going to be looking at $5,800 of their budget at the end of the year. Teresa would have a heart attack, so they'd be up to it a little bit.
We don't want anybody having a heart attack. All right.
Let's go ahead and make a motion on that.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the fuel purchase of the higher octane level. And we're just at the bid phase, right?
Correct.
So, yeah, go forward with the bid at the higher octane level.
Yeah. We have a motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Just a couple of items that I wanted to make the board aware of. If we back up a little bit to courts for the drug testing services, we have reviewed that possible piggyback with the state of Idaho, and I'm just waiting for confirmation from the courts that that is the direction that they want to move. But then a contract should come back before the board for review and signature on that. With the holidays, it's tough to decide like who's in the office and not, but I would, I guess, two to three weeks before the board sees that back in the office. If we move down to the detention center, the communication upgrade that has been in the works, that is an ARPA project, and a contract has been submitted to M2. And regarding that contract, I do anticipate having all those documentation back by Friday, and hopefully before the board on Monday.
Let's go back to the drug testing a little bit. And let's reveal the information that you found out.
Um.
You want me to reveal it? Just plain simple.
So it was found. As we, as county went out to bid, we received two bids back in. The awarding company was Everhealth. And we had two different options, right? One was to do it at a county site, the other one was to do it at an Everhealth site. We chose county because it was cheaper, right, and more economical for us at $15 a test. We did find out that Everhealth has now contracted with IDOC, the state agency, for a little cheaper price, which was fantastic. But for an Everhealth facility, that Everhealth facility is the ladder. It's our facility that they're using to test IDOC. So we are looking.
I'm not happy. I'm not happy at all with this situation. I haven't talked to Brian yet about that. I was hoping he'd be here today, but.
They're going to reimburse us for use of our facility?
That's what I say. I got to talk to Brian. They're charging us $3 more for our facility and charging them for using their facility, which they wanted to charge us $5 more per test. I just, I wasn't real impressed when I found that out the other day. So we are moving forward. I've talked to Jason a little bit, told him we're moving forward. I'd like to see somebody else actually bid. I think there's a couple more.
He has reached out to a couple companies, Serentown. If we choose to go that route and open it back up to other providers, we would go through the entire bidding process back again right at this moment. So the state is also looking at doing a statewide contract that everybody would be included in, but that won't be, I believe, till the fall of '25. So we were hoping this would be a quick and easy Band-Aid to get us a cheaper route and then see as the state rolls forward with their plans.
But I misunderstood, because I thought we was going out to bid, and other companies were able to bid on this this time in the last conversation with Jason.
Not if we piggyback off of IDOC's contract. If we piggyback off of IDOC's contract, we're guaranteed the $12 a test at an Everhealth site. If we go out to bid, then we do open it up to all kinds of different vendors. He's been in conversation with a couple that potentially could serve us what we require for our court system.
Well, we're going to pretend out here in front, and that's where they're going to be.
Drive through testing.
About ended.
That, Jason, Jason will be back with the board shortly. Detention Center, Detention Center Diesel Generator. That project is, again, moving forward, right? We switched gears to go out for a general contractor. We did switch also to a mandatory pre-bid meeting. It is a secure facility. That's the only way general contractors are going to be able to get in there and look at it. But best practice does ask that we have two of those, so we have made those arrangements. The first one is going to be after the new year, on the 7th of January at 1:00 p.m., and the 2nd the following week, on the 16th at 11:00 a.m. So we have switched gears. Not only do we have manufacturers looking at this to bid it out, but we also now have a couple of general contractors that have been invited and know about the project. So we're excited to get that one moving along. We have also been in contact with Christie. There is a concern, depending on the lead time of that large generator, that it might push us that the project won't be completed until fiscal year '26. So again, to put another thing onto Christie's plate, just to keep a tag on that as we move it forward, we're just going to need to watch how quickly they can respond back and get those materials back into us, and when they anticipate that being complete. But we're all hopefully on the same page on that guy. And that is all I have for the board.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Might as well stay there, Buddy Kyle's coming out.
All right, I'll stay here.
Kyle Burmester, Public Works Director. Good morning. Good morning. Got a couple agreements with the Forest Service. We had some questions last time I brought it in, and apparently me and Buddy had a meeting over the week with Forest Service and all of their different departments that they have. And it is a little, there's still, it's about clear as mud on some of the stuff, but they're working hard. I wanted to kind of just start out with the modification of the grant agreement. So this annual operations plan, it still references the old agreement, and for this season, this is just our operations plan to be grooming in this Forest Ranger District. So nothing's changed there. They did add this minimum wage paid sick leave. Talked with Matthew and Christie and seen that we were okay with that, what would that do? And it's pretty much just for, if you're using federal contractors. We did talk about that again in the meeting, and they said, yes, we had some pushback, and it doesn't really matter to you guys with the counties, so we are dropping it off. So it is dropped out of this next agreement. So we left it in there because by the time they changed it, we'd be another couple weeks down the road to bring you the same contract with just it not in there, which it doesn't affect us anyway. So I opted to just still bring you this contract so we can get moving forward with our grooming program.
Got out of snow first. Okay. Any questions?
No, I'm good with this one.
Any motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the contract as presented and discussed.
So on the master challenge cost share agreement.
Hey, wait your turn. We have a motion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It's catching around here. We're just trying to herd things wrong.
You know, just to see.
We're ready to go. Good.
I don't even have a gavel.
Just checking me anymore.
I wonder why.
So on this master cost share agreement, what has been going on is the other agreement started in around eight, it was put in in 2018. They've been working for six to seven years trying to come up with this. People think our wheels turn slow. We found someplace that turns slower. So they're still working on it. Their why it's here is not with this season, it will be for going into our next season. But normally, we're supposed to have our paperwork and everything all done by October. So we're kind of, they're just jumping ahead and trying to get moving forward with it. The difference is in this one is this operations plan is called a supplemental project agreement that will supersede over for our area of, that we'll do each year of what we're doing here with this Ranger District. The reporting, they have said is, we're doing just great, it's not going to change. It's, I asked and made sure on all that, and they said, no, it's pretty much the same agreement, what you were doing with just adding other people. And they did wish that they could come today. Brian Delange from the Parks and Rec had some surgery, and Kim Obleef, the Ranger for here, is, they just happened to have their Forest Service statewide meeting at 11 o'clock today. So they weren't able to come to help with it, but.
If you got clarification, verbal clarification.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agreement. Let's see, official name of this thing. The master challenge agreement as presented.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
So next year, you should see the difference in, from the modification one, we should be working off of a supplemental, the spars, or spas, whatever they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Christie?
Christie Clausar, comptroller. A few items for the board today. The first is signature on the public defense report. Hopefully, this is the last one we have to deal with. However, we should have some rollover monies. I don't know if they'll make us report on that. This is a report that I have to fill out online. And then it kicked to Jason, even though this doesn't show the signature from Jason, Jason did sign his portion. And then you guys have a one-pager that I need your signatures, and then I will submit that, and this report will be filed out.
Okay, any questions?
Nope. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the report as presented and authorize signatures.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Do you want that?
Second item I have for the board is an annual road report. This just reports our.
A few items for the board today. The first is signature on the public defense report. Hopefully, this is the last one we have to deal with. However, we should have some rollover monies. I don't know if they'll make us report on that. This is a report that I have to fill out online. And then it kicked to Jason, even though this doesn't show the signature from Jason. Jason did sign his portion, and then you guys have a one-pager that I need your signatures, and then I will submit that, and this report will be final.
Okay, any questions?
Nope. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the report as presented and authorize signatures.
We have motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you want that?
Second item I have for the board is an annual road report. The, this just reports our beginning balances, revenues in, and then Roden Bridge provides me the expenditures. At the bottom, it shows where our ending balance is, and then it shows what's obligated on the third page, what's obligated out, and then the remaining is for general funds and operations. I do have one minor correction Kyle caught this morning. On page three, for five miles of pot mix, that shouldn't be two hundred and fifty dollars. It should be eight hundred thousand. The total on the prior page is correct. That number is just wrong, so. I'll adjust my copy. This is another online application. I have to do it through Open Gov, the state system. And so I just gain commission signatures and Jason's signature, and then I'll do an electronic submission.
Okay.
The information is already in the state system. I just need to make sure that eight hundred thousand is in there. And then I'll just sign for you on that electronic part. If you approve.
Any questions?
When we calculate these expenses, how do we do that? Is that just like actuals, or are we using some federal numbers to base our stuff off of?
Roden Bridge has, if you wanna come up, Roden Bridge tracks for every expense that we have, they track that in their Pub Works system, and then, Pub Works, right?
Yeah, you didn't get all that fun stuff, but we have each one of these split out of what we do out throughout the year is what we're tracking through our asset management.
And that's that sheet you showed me the other day. For like each job, you have a cost sheet that you show through?
Yeah.
And you're using some of the federal data that you base some of those costs off of?
Yes. That one you seen, and what we still had to use this time was that old program. But that's what we're getting updated right now with the new one that we're starting to get ready to implement, and that's how we get the costs for everything. Every day, every employee is, if they're working ten-hour day or an eight-hour day, their time matches that in asset management. So every minute of the day, and what equipment, materials, and what asset they're working on.
So basically, they do the cost accounting side?
Right.
And that's marker, if anybody's watching. It just does the cost accounting and shows how their work is allocated out in that project.
And that's what I wanted people to know. We're using this system that really breaks it down by job and gives us that cost per job, so we can really watch. And now, in the future, we can begin to really dive into those numbers and evaluate what we're doing to look for efficiencies and things like that. So the direction we're traveling is really very exciting, I think, so.
Yeah, it is really neat. We're getting, we got a couple more from GIS yesterday. But just so you guys know, we, with that system, we can track every one of our culvert pipes, every sign, every post. Right now, we're working on a guardrail, getting that list together, and so it's the locations, where they're at. It's pretty, we've got a pretty robust system that we can look at any asset we have, so it's nice.
Thank you. I have no further questions, Mr. Chair. So motion? I move that we approve the road and street financial report as presented.
You have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 There's, should be signatures on the front page, actually. And there's a spot for Jason to sign on the left-hand side.
All right. You got double signatures.
And if I can have that back as well?
I put eight hundred thousand on initial bid, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, we signed on that page.
That works, okay. And I'll send my project to these two, for Christine.
Okay.
Next item I have for the board is an ARPA update. I do have new sheets. As I was working on this through, this morning. And I emailed a copy for the record. So this has been quite an adventurous week for Shanda and myself. If it's okay, can Shanda come up?
Oh, yeah.
So this spreadsheet is revised. I have added a column due to the upcoming deadline of twelve thirty-one. That requires us to have obligations. I added a column for contract plus amount paid to date. That helped us find, for example, on an expired suppression system, that we had that budget at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. However, we only had a contract for thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars, which meant we have unobligated funds. So I did that for all of the unfinished projects, and got to where we have some monies that need to be obligated. We'll focus on the good news really quick. We did have some projects that were completed. The jail finished out their parking lot at seventy-five thousand dollars. Their HVAC unit came in, that's completed. The original budget for that was more, but actual costs were a hundred and fifty-three thousand, which left about sixty thousand dollars in unspent funds and unobligated. Their wet cell project came in about twenty thousand under budget. It came in at a hundred and forty thousand, and then the sheep barn is finally officially completed with that last invoice that was on the commission report today for the forklift rail of thirty-five hundred dollars.
You can only not bring it up.
So we have four projects complete.
Yay!
Again, more unobligated funds. Shanda mentioned briefly, if you look in the column that says under contract, we now have all items under contract except for Central. Shanda's hoping to have that one sent. We had to change gears last minute at the beginning of this week. There's a new vendor that's gonna be in play for this project. With that, this project has also come on under budget. The new budget and hopefully signed contract for that project will be seven hundred and sixty-five thousand and change. We had a million one budgeted. So that is where the scrambling took place as we have to find additional projects. So the next item I have for you is to discuss some upcoming projects that hopefully you will take for consideration and possibly approve. On this sheet, you will see in green, there are metal detectors. That was not a project that we had talked about, but we did budget in the department budget to do those metal detectors. When Tony was working with the new vendor for his Central project, that vendor can also do our metal detectors. It was one of the vendors that we had talked to when the procurement process occurred two years ago, year and a half ago?
Year and a half.
The price was.
Substantial.
Yes. So if the commission would take under consideration, we could get the metal detectors for the courthouse done. And it's for four metal detectors, so I believe it also includes juvenile. The cost would be seventy-nine thousand, four eighty-five. The other item we would like you to consider is, when we did the jail paving project, there was only seventy-five thousand dollars allotted. That did not finish the whole project, so we got a quick last-minute quote. The contract allows us to extend that project. We would have to sign the contract still because the dollar amount will be added to. That's a hundred and seventy-two thousand. That would completely finish the jail area for parking. If the commission will approve those two projects, that leaves two hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars unobligated. So the next proposal is, we have a potential contract for ten percent contingency on the YDC building that the commission could approve for two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. The vendor is willing to do so. We're pretty sure where that's gonna be a new build, there's gonna be some items that may be missed, and also winter conditions. So if the commission is willing to entertain that, that would take care of this amount that needs to be obligated. A couple of other options that we could provide, just so that you have the abilities, is the ambulance sales order. That is three hundred and fifteen thousand. If that is signed before the end of the year, we could add that as a obligated project. There's a twelve-to-eighteen month build for that project, which would allow us some flexibility in any of these projects or go over budget. The other option would be, Adam has a MPLS rounding system that he's gonna need in near future. That's a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars that we could do. That would not cause complications because it's a sole source.
I just heard this, so we have to post it for two weeks.
Never mind. That was not a common option. Take that off the table.
Right, she did tell me about it this morning. I'm like, yep, great, but we'd have to post it.
Is there a piggyback option on that?
Payback?
Piggyback?
Oh, if that's possible, that could be a route. Because that is what we are proposing to do with the metal detectors, is the piggyback.
So at this point, we have wheels in motion. Wait, pending your okay, for contracts, for the paving, the metal detectors, and the contingency, which would just make this very easy.
And that's the direction I'd like to go. I'd like the metal detectors. I think that we've kicked that ball around here, and I like that. We've already started the other project, but for the school, we gotta have some extra funds available. We don't know what all the interior, so that's the wisest, in my opinion, direction to go with these funds. I mean, the others are important, but that's where I sit.
No, I was excited the other day when I was talking to Shanda about the metal detectors, and she told me about this option. It was like, yeah, buddy. She was, we're getting close. That was exciting. Jail paving, okay. So, yeah, no, again, I support the YDC project, so I'm good with that direction. So do you want to form a motion on that?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I would move that we authorize and move forward with the projects for the metal detectors, the jail paving, and the YDC allocation as discussed.
You have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you two breathing a little better now?
Yes.
It's been a rough year.
It's been a rough year, but thank you both. I mean, there's been so much work gone on to spin these ARPA funds in a positive direction that's gonna benefit the county, and I think every one of these projects is gonna last for a long time to benefit the county.
It falls in line with what Commissioner Crowe would like. The paving will prevent future costs, and same thing with metal detectors, so it falls in line with. How would you like to see this?
Don't tempt me. Don't tempt me. All right. Thank you very, very much. Ah, we have a signature on a quit-deal, quitclaim deeds of Crown and County property.
Mr. Chair, I move that we assign the quitclaim deed as presented.
You have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
About time you're pleased. And then? Is this a board of ambulance, or is this spending money?
That's the one that we take out the prepaid option.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move that we enter into the board of ambulance.
You have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. And then, Mr. Chair, I move that we assign the professional sales and service for the purchase of the ambulance as presented.
You have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. And, Mr. Chair, I move that we exit the board of ambulance.
You have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With that being said, we are.